Good evening, welcome to the Sunshine Meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's Thursday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. Roll call myself, please.
Councilwoman Oller.
President.
Councilman Azar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Croson.
Present.
Councilman DeBon.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Nassar.
Present.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. If this is your first time at one of our city council meetings tonight, there will be no action taken on any of our items that are on the agenda. If you're here to speak about something that's not on the agenda, next week at a regular meeting, we allow 30 minutes for public comments. First order of business, Michelle, please.
Appropriation 24, 2017, $48,398.81 from Police to overtime number 412129.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Keane, Assistant Chief of Public Department. These funds are from Operation Pullover, the Marshal's Task Force and Prosecutor's Office interdiction. They're just reimbursables that we're going to move from general back into the overtime account.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 24, 2017? Counsel? Thanks. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 25, 2017, $1,456.28 from Police to repair supplies number 423015.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Sean Keane again, Assistant Chief of Public Department. This is again a reimbursement to Prosecutor's Office for expenses for the Drug Task Force that the department originally paid for.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 25, 2017? Counsel? Sean, you had said that as a reimbursement from the Prosecutor's Office. How does that money flow into them and then to us?
Well, the Drug Task Force is actually, they operate out of the Terror Police Department, and the majority of the members, five of the six, are Terror Police Officers.
Okay.
So when they have repair supplies such as for vehicles, we may make the initial purchase, or the work may be done at the Sewer's Department, but then we get reimbursed from Prosecutor's Office. For any expense, it's actually theirs.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Alright. Any else? Alright, thanks Sean. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 26, 2017, $282,737.68 from Sanitary District General number 0298 to Sanitary District Bond Fund number 03300000000391042.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President and members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. This appropriation is to close the Sanitary General Fund. This was opened years ago when we used to have extra property tax dollars and we would use it for drainage projects. Chuck could speak to this better than I. Different projects for the wastewater facility. We've not been doing projects for some time since the property tax caps went into place, so we have a remaining balance in there of $282,000, and we're going to transfer that into the bond fund, which will help to cover the property tax losses we have every year by the circuit breaker.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 26, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Leslie, can you tell us which fund is being closed again?
It's called the Sanitary District General Fund. It used to receive money from the wastewater treatment fund, which is Fund 620, and we would just, they used to do a transfer from that fund into this fund for special projects, but we no longer have any extra money from that or from the property tax. So nothing's been done in that fund for quite a while.
Okay, thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 27, 2017, $1,341,990.39 from Wastewater Utility number 0620 to Sanitary District Bond Fund number 03300000000391042.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. This appropriation is for the Sanitary Bond Fund. That's where we pay our property tax bonds from. And in recent years, since the property tax caps went into place, we have a circuit breaker that has taken this balance into a negative amount, and that's the negative balance that we have right now, 1.341 million. We don't get the full property tax, so this is just to transfer money from the wastewater utility over to the bond fund, so we'll have a zero cash balance. And then we will get our property tax distribution in December, and then we'll have a positive cash balance at the end of the year.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 27, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott.
We'll be positive for just a day or so, is that right? Because the next month they need to do...
Yes, January 1st.
January 1st.
But with the money from the 200 and some thousand dollars from the first appropriation, we'll have a little bit of a balance in there now, until we eat that up through the circuit breaker.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 28, 2017, $1,343,418.84 from Wastewater Utility number 0620 to Wastewater Utility Capital Improvement Fund number 06100000000391042.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Wesley Ellis, the City Controller. The Wastewater Utility Capital Improvement Fund has a negative balance of the 1.343 million dollars. Those are from projects that were done in the past. We no longer run projects through that. We decided it would be best just to keep it in the Fund 620, the wastewater fund, so you can see any projects we're doing all in one fund, but it continues to have a negative balance, so we were going to transfer money from Wastewater Utility over to the Capital Improvement Fund, just to close that account.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 28, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Leslie, can you speak in broader terms to these three...
Sure.
...movements of money? Why is this happening? What's going on? Did the state tell us to do this, or is it just something that your team has decided to do?
A few points. A few years ago, we found out that the sanitary board was set up, should be set up, to have authorization over the wastewater utility plant. We had had it going through border works that were set up years and years ago, so we corrected that. When we found out about that, I talked with the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts, and I said, "Rather than having all these different budgets, can we combine them all into the wastewater utility since it's all under the sanitary district now? It's all just one big group." And they said yes, that they thought that was a good idea. So yes, they are, you know, they are in agreement. I've talked to both of them, as well as, let's see, you had another question. I was lost by their train of thought. I know you had another question.
Well, I was wondering if we were...
Oh, the negative balance is what I was going to say. Yes, we have to have at least a zero cash balance at the end of the year. And this wastewater capital improvement fund, we're no longer using, so we're going to close that down. The sanitary general fund, we are running those expenditures through the wastewater utility fund, which is Fund 620. And the other one is the bond fund where we're losing revenue every year from the circuit breaker credits. So we're just trying to shore that one up a little bit as well.
I was paying closer attention to the sanitary board when it was all, when this was all being reorganized, and after we do these moves through, that you're suggesting that are happening now, will the council's role in moving money around change for the...
No, you still have to appropriate all funds.
Yeah, for sanitary district.
The sanitary, yeah. In fact, well, I don't think it'll change at all. In 2017, we didn't prepare a sanitary general budget. We just put it in the wastewater utility, and you would have received either one. Had we prepared a sanitary general budget, you would have received that as well, so it's just less budgets for you to review. It'll all be in one.
Okay. Thank you, I will.
You had said, Leslie, that we had used the capital improvement fund in the past. When was the last time we had used it?
Let's see. Probably '16, I believe there was some work done on the 641 bypass. And I know we...
So was the...
The invoice came to a lot more than we had originally.
Was the conversation, did we start the conversation with the DLGF and State Board of Accounts, or was that something that the administration requested to close them out?
Yeah, I contacted them last year when I was working on the budgets for '17.
Okay. Councilman Elliott.
Yes. This fund, on December 31, 2015, which one day later this council came into existence through these members, it had a negative balance of $4,230,666. And it was reduced by $3 million of the money that was borrowed from the county. $3 million, I believe, went into this fund, and the other $3 million into the sanitary bond fund.
Yes.
Is where that ended up. So from my personal perspective, it's been reduced from $4,200,000 to $1,300,000, the deficit. I'm not overly concerned about reducing it further till I know what our plan is to repay the $6 million to the county. So if anybody's got any ideas on that, because I've talked about it before, when, you know, when the debt service reserve funding ended, just start making those $140,000 dollar monthly payments, well, my preference is that to be formalized before we deal with this.
I think these are two separate issues.
They're not to me.
If we pay, when we pay the ban back, which we will pay the ban back, it will come from the wastewater treatment utility, which is 620. If we don't take care of this by the end of the year, we're going to have another negative balance, and the State Board of Accounts doesn't allow that.
But it was $4,300,000 negative when we stepped in.
Right, correct.
Okay, so action we've taken...
We've taken a lot of action.
Has reduced it by $3 million.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, to me, that's a good faith effort to reduce that balance.
That's a good improvement.
There's also a member on this council that I think is responsible for the county loaning us that money, and I'd like to help address the repayment of that.
Sure, we'd be happy to meet with you.
Rather than three years later.
I agree.
I'm just saying, I probably will not approve this unless we have a plan in place to repay the ban and it gets started.
I understand what you're saying, but what does, I guess I can talk to you later.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't understand what the negative balance has to do with repaying the ban.
Well, I don't understand why having a loan and not even thinking about having a plan of repayment doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, we have a plan, and I'd be happy to meet with you.
It's, you know, you use leverage where you got it, so this is the place where I think we got it.
Okay, you can keep the negative balance.
What is the plan to pay back the county?
The plan? I believe that's what, weren't you working on that as well, Eddie? I think we had some, we're working with Dean Rogers on that, too.
And...
And we've offered some different ideas up on it. Part of it was to put it in, well, go ahead, Eddie.
There have been several ideas that have been discussed as far as what exactly is going to happen moving forward, whether we're going to have that set in stone within the next week. I highly doubt that.
No. But it will be paid.
But obviously, we have to pay it back. I don't know off the cuff what the penalties are, but they're pretty hefty.
Yeah, there's no reason it won't be repaid. We have plenty of money to pay it, so we'll be fine. And I would like to start making installment payments. I agree with you, Earl.
Okay. And that's been discussed for a couple of months, so...
Yeah, so we can get this...
You know, it's kind of an installment payment idea along, which came out before this idea came along, making this transfer.
Right, before you, yeah, before the council.
First things first. Thank you.
Councilwoman Croson.
I just have a question for Councilman Elliott. Are you referring only to the appropriation 28, you're concerned, or does it go to the past?
I'm referring to 28, making a transfer to the fund for a commitment we have to make after the bond payments.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That's what we gotta do.
Thank you, I do.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 29, 2017, $25,000 from Motor Vehicle Highway number 0201 to Workers' Comp number 435010.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Wesley Ellis, the City Controller. This appropriation is for the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, also known as the Street Fund. It is to help replenish workers' comp for a lot of workers' comp invoices we've had this year.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 29, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, could someone summarize for us what the issues were that caused these...
That would be under Eddie's department.
At any given time, there's several workers' compensation claims that are out there, and the problem with workers' compensation is that it can last a week or it could last years, depending upon the situation. For example, we've had extremely high claims the past two months with regard to this issue. I can tell you for a fact, for example, one of the major workers' compensation Ryan items that we cut last year, or excuse me, out of 2018's budget was in parks, I believe. I can almost guarantee you that'll be exhausted within the first month or two. And that's the issue you have with workers' compensation, is that you may not have any claims at all one year, but all it takes is one relatively large claim to completely exhaust it, and possibly several other items. So again, it's extremely difficult to budget for.
I understand that, but what's the nature of the claim? I mean, what caused the claim? Was it...
This particular claim?
Was it an accident?
Yes.
Generally, they're, I mean, it's going to be some sort of an accident that occurs with regard to a claim.
Generally, accidents are avoidable, that's what I'm...
Absolutely. But again, accidents are accidents, so we work closely with our workers' compensation insurer and with our general insurance company to meet with our safety coordinators to see what, if anything, we can put into place to help prevent these things. But at the end of the day, you have freak accidents. I've seen three large ones in my short time with the city, and we've got, you know, we've got over 500 employees, so...
How many large ones?
I know for, I can think of, and I'm saying three large freak accidents that were unavoidable.
So describe the three freak accidents.
I don't know that I could probably discuss them because of the nature of the medical issues that are involved, but medical issues are generally confidential. I don't know if it's, if it's disclosive or not.
I'm talking about the medical issues, I'm just talking about what the cause of the accident was.
And again, I don't...
What happened?
I don't know. I'd have to look into see if I can discuss that. If I can disclose it to you, I'd be happy to do it. I don't want to sit around and discuss an accident that happened to an employee and then be disclosing to the public what an injury was that occurred to them.
Okay, well, figure out a way that we can find out, you know, what's going on.
But we have professionals.
Is not appropriate, or something's not right, you know, something...
We have high workers' compensation claims, but we have an insurer that works with us. We do go through and meet on a regular basis to discuss with our safety coordinator what we can do to avoid these things. But at the end of the day, you can't, you just can't help certain things from happening. And anything I can share with you, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and show you kind of what happened.
Okay, I'll get back in a minute. Thank you.
Eddie, just to follow up on that, you said that the majority of the claims had happened the past two months?
No, I said it's, the past two months have been probably close to double what they've been throughout the rest of the year.
Okay.
Normal claims are somewhere, what, $30,000 to $40,000, and they're up, I think we had a $90,000 a month last month, so, and that's citywide.
Well, I'm looking at the Street Department's budget here. We had budgeted 120, this is at the end of October, we budgeted 125,000 for the year, and we're almost at 168, so do we expect to be around the 200,000 mark? Okay.
Yes.
And have we hired a full-time department head for the Street Department yet?
For the Street Department?
We have not.
Okay. One of the other things I noticed on the financials that we got is we had budgeted $30,000 for the year for repair and maintenance, and year-to-date, we're at $62,000. Is it possible that a lot of this stuff is happening because we don't have a department head in place yet?
No, the repair and maintenance is due to the, we've not been able to purchase new equipment. We have, most of the departments all have very old equipment, so we have a lot of repairs in all departments.
So we, but, so we doubled that, though?
Yes, we have.
I mean, we knew that to begin the year last year.
We have very old equipment. We can't, yeah.
Okay. So is it possible that us not having a department head is causing some of these accidents?
I don't think any have happened since the department had left. I believe these were all before. The two major ones that have happened at NVH, I know, happened in 2016.
Have we had any since we didn't have a department head?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not in that particular department.
Not in that department, no.
Okay.
No.
Anybody else? Thanks. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 30, 2017, $40,700 from Clerk's Document Repetuation Fund number 0236, the Services Contractual number 432010 for $35,000, and purchase of a computer equipment number 444030 for $5,700.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
I'll try and keep it short.
Okay.
City Court is, and the judge is here, wave your hand. City Court is working on going paperless. This is going to be a long process. We are quite attached to our file folders, but one of the things that we have to do is have additional scanners at desk, have additional copiers, and we needed some electrical work, and we also need to update our Windows license earlier than IT had planned, so we have a non-reverting account that is allowed by state statute that we collect from each ticket that we receive funds on. So those fees are placed into that. We really haven't used much of it this year or last year, so we put it towards this project. Now additionally in this, some of this is paying for what we call interns. They're really contractors that we pay to do office work, file tickets, pull tickets, a lot of busy work. In addition, we are looking at, not in 2018, but 2019, hopefully, we will be in a position where we will not need to buy additional filing cabinets in the future, everything will be paperless, and everything will be stored digitally. So that's what all these funds are transferred for. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 30, 2017? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Really didn't think I was going to have to say a word today, but even I can glean from what you're saying that you guys are gambling with a lot of money by going now to a paperless, completely paperless society. I have not been able to watch the news for at least, oh, it's going on four or five years, where there hasn't been some way of, they pirate information from halfway around the world, and they use that then to rip off people. Well, they're ripping off us citizens, there also would be a chance for them to rip off the city. If you go to a complete paperless society where everything is done on the computers, I think they're just asking for trouble, that's all I'm just, I'd like to know what you have to say about that. Have you looked into that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, would you like me to respond?
Yes, ma'am.
Indiana State Supreme Court works with, has a division called the Indiana Court, State Court Administration. It has been explained to us, and I believe the judge can respond, that we will not have a choice by the end of 2018. We are trying to get ahead of the game. I understand some of the public's concerns, but what they don't understand is this information's already been stored digitally for the last six years, and there have been complaints. All of the information is protected by the Indiana Supreme Court, who makes all of the decisions for all of the courts in the state of Indiana. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Appropriation 31, 2017, $927.01 from Clerk of Revenue number 390010 to Clerk Publication of Legal Notices number 434010.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
That would be me. I, we will need to amend this next week. The fund Clerk of Revenue is basically the general fund, and so it was listed incorrectly. We'll need to amend that to General Fund 0101. This is reimbursements for the legal notices on the tax statements we do each year in the council. The clerk's office pays for them, but the city code states that we are to be reimbursed by the petitioner. The money goes for the general fund, and we appropriate it back to our line item. I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 31, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Appropriation, I'm sorry, Special Ordinance 59, 2017, authorizing the issuance of taxable economic development revenue bonds, Purelex project, and I believe you have proposed amendment before you.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Good evening, Counsel. Steve Boy, Department of Redevelopment. As the council members know, we have a new company coming into Fort Harrison Business Park called Purelex USA. As Dave Taylor can attest, this is a project that's a high-technology German process for the recycling of rubber that'll extract carbon black oil and metal. And this particular item pertains to part of our incentive package for the company, which is the construction of rail improvements to serve the plant. And in particular, it'll involve the rebuilding of an existing rail siding that serves the property, as well as a new rail crossing on Steelton Road. So the folks that travel Steelton will welcome that. And then, as a reminder, Purelex, it's about a $30 million project, 55 new jobs at $19 an hour, and the company is actually considering this to be Phase 1, so they plan on doing more down the road, probably doubling the project in a few years. And with that being said, our whole back pew here is here in regard to this project, but I will ask Lisa Lee of Ice Miller to come up and talk a little bit about the bond issue.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Lisa Lee with Ice Miller, serving as bond counsel to the city on this project. You have in front of you amended special ordinance number 59. This is the ordinance that authorizes the issuance of the bonds to pay for the rail improvement project. It is amended in two ways from the ordinance that was introduced originally here on November 9th. First of all, the maximum issuance amount was increased from $1,650,000 to $1,700,000, so only a $50,000 increase. The reason for that is this project hasn't been bid, and there's different estimates coming out, and there's different amounts of potential cash that might be used to pay down some of the bond issues, so we wanted to make sure that we had everything covered from that perspective. The other is the interest rate maximum increased from 7% to 7.5. Again, wanting to make sure we had the basis covered. These are taxable. Interest rates are going up. Currently, we're looking at either a local bank purchase, a private placement, or the company purchasing the bonds, so we want to make sure that we can cover all of those bases. The bonds would be payable from TIF from the Fort Harrison area. There are no other outstanding bonds in that area, with a company guarantee backing that up for any shortfall. So no other city revenues are pledged to pay the bond issue. And the coverage currently out there is estimated at about 118% to 170%. So the coverage is good, but we do have a company guarantee on the back end of that. Prior to requesting any action be taken by the council on December 14th, the Economic Development Commission will hold its public hearing on the project, and then will make a determination whether or not to recommend to the council that you adopt the bond ordinance. And we are still currently looking at closing this by the end of 2017 to get the project started.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 59, 2017? Please state your name, address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes.
No, a little short of that. I just got a question. When you say you're going to, this company's coming into, are you buying up old tires and drawing parts from them? And if this is the case, then I'm all for this.
That's why I made the reference to Mr. Taylor. There was some confusion when this project was first announced. This will involve rubber that's from shredded tires, and the shredding is done elsewhere, so it's not done on-site. So the reason for the need for the rail improvements is that rail will be used, as well as truck, to bring the shredded rubber to the plant, and then the end product will go out, a combination of truck and rail as well. So yes, it will help keep tires out of the waste stream, if you will. Absolutely.
Anybody else? Counsel? Steve, I just had a question. That rail will be able to be used for future expansion... Uh, that rail will be able to be used for future expansion. If somebody else wanted to come there, it wouldn't just be used for Purallex, or would somebody else be able to use it as well?
That's, that's correct. The rail, or the configuration of the property in the Fort Harrison Business Park, uh, is done in such a way that, uh, there's, there's a mainline CSX spur, uh, CSX mainline that goes through, and it's not possible to have spurs from that, but, uh, there is also, uh, an Indiana railroad line that comes through that serves the Fort Harrison Industrial Park. And, um, uh, there's other property in the, uh, Fort Harrison Business Park that in theory could use this, uh, rail as well down the road.
And then this also includes doing some, uh, road improvements on Steelton Drive as well?
Yeah, the plan is to, uh, put in a new crossing at Steelton and, and repave 150 feet on both sides of the crossing. Uh, as Lisa said, we're still working on the budget. Um, if we have the opportunity to do more paving on Steelton, then the 150 feet, we wanna do that.
What else? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Special ordinance 62, 2017, amending appropriation 10, 2016 as amended the 2017 city of Tarbo budget.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Mr. President and members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis, the city controller. Uh, special ordinance 62 is to amend the 2017 budget for the general fund. It's a budget reduction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on special ordinance 62, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselor Nation.
Wesley, for the edification of the council and, uh, the public who may be paying attention, can you just explain what's going on here? And did you make, I mean, we used to say that, or rather, the mayor used to say that, you know, we were roughly 3% under budget. That was what he always shot for. How'd we do this year?
Well, we're not quite to that point yet, but if you include the reductions, I'm sure we're probably at least at 3%. I know it, um, the, the total reduction on this sheet is 430,303 dollars for the general fund. Um, I will be asking for an amendment next week on this, Michelle, and I will, I will give this to you early, but, um, under the information tech, the IT department, uh, the group health line item, um, I was helping Michelle with your group health fund for the city council, and you need a little bit more money, so I'm going to reduce, I'm going to change the reduction. It's currently 12,300. I'm only, only going to reduce it by 7,065, so that you all can have 5,235 in your group health line item, and that number, that's coming up later in a, in a resolution for you, so, just some information. So the bottom line will change by 5,235 dollars.
And can you remind us why we do this?
Throughout the year, you know, we don't know how, obviously, how operations are going to go, so at the end of the year, if we have, um, some available money that we know for sure we aren't going to spend, we go ahead and reduce the budget, because once this is approved by the council, I send it to the DLGF, and then they will take that off of the 2017 budget, then they will reduce it by this amount, so it will help us to get our 2018 budgets approved.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Resolution 24, 2017, authorizes filing of an application with the Department of Transportation for grants.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Let me speak on this. This is just, we do this yearly. This is just, uh, we have to do this as a resiliency to authorize the application for grants.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 24, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 26, 2017, transfer of $6,700 in the city judge's budget.
Mr. President, members of the council, Chris Reed with the Tarbo City Court Judge. What we, uh, were seeking in this, we, uh, got to looking, our printers, copiers, in both the, uh, courtroom here and in the office, uh, the judge's office, were at a minimum 10 years old. This, uh, copier here, I started with prosecutor's office 15 years ago, and the one that was in here, I remember it being there then. With what Michelle spoke about briefly there, we are going to, which is going to be mandatory, we're going to the, uh, paperless, which we have in, uh, multiple documents, both in color and, uh, regularly. And so with the transfer, uh, of the funds from, and looking back at the budget, going through that, we had an overreach in the employer's group health, and we'll be changing that from, um, account number 413030 to account number 444.030 to the purchase of computer equipment for the purchase of those, uh, printers and, uh, copiers. Hopefully, uh, we'll get at least another 10 years out of them, uh, as are they work as well as the, uh, ones that we have had, uh, by previous administrations. Uh, I'm open to any questions.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 26, 2017? Counsel? Thanks. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 27, 2017, transfer of $90,000 in the cumulative capital development fund budget.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Mr. President and members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis, the city controller. Um, this is just to transfer money that was, um, originally that we thought we were going to lease some equipment. We decided to purchase it, so the $90,000 was put into series two, no, series three, and it should've been put into series four, which is purchase of equipment. So this is just, no new money, just transferring that from the note down to the equipment line item.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation 27, 2017? Counsel? Counselman Elliott?
What equipment are we buying?
IT equipment.
IT?
Yes.
What else? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 28, 2017, transfer of $11,255 from IT group health number 413030 to mayor group health number 413030, $8,945 into mayor perf number 431, I'm sorry, 13060 for $2,310.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Mr. President and members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis. Um, resolution 28 is to transfer money into the benefits line items for the mayor's department.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 28, 2017? Counselor? Counselman Elliott?
Yep. Wesley, how would we end up short on a perf line?
It was miscalculated in the spreadsheet. I went back and looked, and it was, yeah, it had the wrong calculation spreadsheet, so...
Is that the only department?
No, there's, well, that one was. Some, some of the, uh, we have some other group health issues. Some of them also had to do...
Perf.
Oh, perf, yeah, I'm sorry, perf. Yeah, that was just a calculation for perf. Yeah, that was just there, there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next order of business, please.
Resolution 29, 2017, transfer from the legal department employer group health number 413030 to EPD employer group health number 413030 for $7,000. And from EPD, uh, operating supplies number 422005 for $3,000. From EPD gasoline number 422010 for $2,000. And from EPD vehicle repair and maintenance number 437030 for $1,150. To EPD employer group health number 413030 for $6,150, for a total transfer of $13,150.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Leslie Ellis, the city controller. Um, this transfer is from the legal department, from group, the group health line item. I, we had some extra in that line item to shore up the EPD fund, which is the Environmental Protection Department. Um, actually, they have a very, very small budget, and they do a lot of, a lot of work for the city. Um, there were a few line items that they needed some extra money in, and, uh, you can see benefits, operating supplies, gasoline, and the vehicle repair and maintenance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 29, 2017? Counselor?
Mr. President.
Counselman Nation.
Wesley, I, I see gasoline on here, I see diesel, and another one, um, that we, that we're discussing tonight. Is the city still participating in the fuel hedge fund?
We haven't for the last few years, because fuel prices have stabilized, and we haven't done that.
And now they're on the rise again. Are we planning to, uh, get back into that next year?
That is definitely something we'll keep our eye on, and I'll talk to the Indiana Bond Bank. They're the ones that have the program, and sometimes they allow you to join mid-year, so I can check on that as well.
I didn't realize that we have been out of that game for, uh, more than two years.
Right. I'd been tracking it, and, uh, the first few years, we did really well. I know it's, we don't do it, um, to make money, but, um, I was trying to cut costs, and it, we weren't really saving any money for a couple of years, so with the gas prices being down, we went ahead and opted out for a couple of years, but I think it's time to take a look at it again.
Since, um, we're at the end of the second year of, uh, this term for all of the elected officials, and we have four new council members, uh, can you briefly describe that fuel hedge program for their...
Sure, yes. It's through the Indiana Bond Bank and Maverick Energy, I believe it is. And what they do, they set, um, a price, they have a floor and a ceiling, and they set it for diesel fuel, and they set it for regular gasoline. And you can join the consortium, and, um, you have to figure out, you know, there's a little bit of work involved. They have to figure out how many gallons we use on average per month. I fill out all this information, send it in, depending upon how many entities sign up. If it falls within the range, then, um, nobody owes anyone, anyone money, but there's a service fee, you know, so much because they have to pay for, you know, their, um, the cost for their attorneys and their admin fees. But if it goes below the floor, the gas prices, then we pay them. If it goes above, then they pay us. So I, I don't think it's ever gone below, but, uh, when we first implemented the program of, uh, for the first couple of years, I believe we actually got some paybacks.
That's what I remember too.
Yes.
I remember having a favorable impression of, of the program after a couple of years of actually participating in it.
Yes.
But like I said, I didn't re, I didn't remember or realize that we had stopped participating.
Yeah, but we track it, but that's a great point.
Thanks for, uh, that explanation. I yield.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 30, 2017, transfer of $17,600 in the fire department budget.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
I was waiting to see if he's gonna handle this. Mr. President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. Basically, my three resolutions tonight are just, uh, end of year cleanup. What this is, is moving money into our gasoline, diesel, and repair supplies, just to bring those, uh, line items back into the black. Uh, as we discussed last, well, didn't discuss, but mentioned last month, our mercy runs are up, so we're using more gasoline and diesel. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 30, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 31, 2017, transfer of $1,600 in the THPD contractual services non-reverting fund budget.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Leslie Ellis. Uh, this resolution is to, um, transfer of $1,600 from one line item to another into the, uh, fire retirement fund. We were just a little bit short.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 31, 2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 32, 2017, transfer of $73,255 in the motor vehicle highway budget.
Petitioner speak on this, please.
Is it out of order if I go back and say something about the previous resolution?
I have my hand back.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Go ahead. Go ahead.
On the agenda, it's listed...
I, I just made it.
Okay. It was listed as THPD, and it, it was actually the fire department for resolution 31. I just wanted to clarify that. So we're ready for resolution 32?
That's what I, when I was gonna try and...
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Mr. President, council members, I'm Leslie Ellis, the city controller. Um, resolution 32, I think we discussed this a little bit. This is, uh, moving some extra money we had in department head, uh, to, and from the regular hourly employees to the workers' comp. And I do know, and I, I can't speak in the circumstances, but I do know of two individuals who were injured very badly in two different accidents that this is covering. They've been on there for quite a while, and that's all. I, no.
Anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution 32, 2017? Counsel? Counselman Elliott?
Yeah. Again, uh, I would like to request a list, say, in the last five years, the date and the nature of the accident period. No names, no dollar amounts, no nothing, just some idea of what took place and when. I, I don't think there's any HIPAA issues involved in that information, so our city attorney can look into that and tell me whether I'm right or not, and what I think the, uh, HIPAA issues are, and, uh, see what we can, see what we can learn, so what's going on here.
Do you have any... Is there any...
I, I'm more than happy to look into that, and I'll share anything that I can. Unfortunately, I just don't, I, I think I know what I'm going to be able to share with you, and I don't know how helpful it's gonna be for what I'm assuming you're requesting it, uh, for. So it's gonna be, you might get something that says January 1 of whatever year there was a head injury, and that's maybe about the extent that you're gonna get.
Counselor, counsel woman crossing.
And counsel and Elliott can confirm this, and I, I don't think we're necessarily so concerned about whether it was a head injury or not, but what, what took place to cause the person to be injured at all is something I'm interested in.
Right. I'll look into it and see. I, I, I'm concerned I won't be able to give you a description of the events, um, but I, I will look into it.
Do we have any litigation on any of these? Is that the concern?
The concern is if, if you disclose too many facts that relates too directly to an individual, I mean, if you work in a department and I describe a certain number of facts to you, you're gonna know exactly who I'm talking about. So, and it's very strict rules with regard to health, health information. And again, I just wanna abide, make sure we're riding by our confidentiality. I'm not trying to keep anything from the council.
Okay. Is there an answer? Counselor, counsel.
Question for Earl. Are, are you trying to just get an idea so that you, we can plan in the future what costs may come in the future, or what we've been averaging for the last five years? Because he could probably get that, as long as it's not specifics towards a patient...
What I'm working towards is there, is there sufficient training? Is it...
Okay.
Paying attention to what's going on? What, you know, what, what is it that is the symptom behind the, uh, the accidents? Is it the equipment? You know, that, that's all I'm trying to...
Oh, Eddie, could you do...
Is it avoidable?
Could you do something like that? Cause would be equipment failure, cause would be, uh, user error, or something like that?
One thing I may suggest is our, um, our insurance broker, somebody who represented it from insurance would be a good person. Um, if you'd like, the council as a whole would like for them to speak or to talk in, uh, a separate meeting, explain to you generally what types of things were, they're able to offer us and what we've got implemented as far as addressing these things. Uh, like I said, I can speak generally to it because I'm not in all those meetings, since I'm not in a public, in a safety coordinated position, but, like I said, I know within the past couple of weeks here, we've even had those types of meetings. They may be able to explain what we're doing proactively, that may be more helpful. And then if you have suggestions, obviously you can offer, offer those to, to that individual. But I, I will continue to look into the facts and, and see what I can give you.
What else? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 33, 2017, transfer of $52,300 in the EMS budget.
Mr. President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. Uh, the majority of this is moving money into repair supplies. Uh, we have repair supplies in our EMS budget and also our fire. Majority of this is for repairs to apparatus. Um, as you know, we are going to the border works on Monday to, uh, open specs for three new ambulances. Uh, our ambulances are close to 200,000 miles. It shows hours on our rigs versus miles, but if you calculate the hours in the miles, they're close to 200,000 miles. So that's the majority of this. And the other part is, uh, for diesel. We have diesel and gasoline in the EMS budget, and also diesel and gasoline in the fire. So we keep those separate, so we know what's being used in the ambulances and the fire trucks. trucks. We have to answer any questions.
Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 33-2017? Counsel? Councilman Elliott?
I'd just like to note, we're moving money out of an overtime account.
Yes, sir.
Good job, chief.
I know, too.
You'll...
Big smile there.
Anything else? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 34-2017, transfer of $1,000 in the EMS budget.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, Fire Chief. This is moving $1,000 into our vehicle repair and maintenance. As I mentioned earlier, our repair supplies pay for the majority of our fire apparatus. This line item is majority of our staff vehicles.
Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 34-2017? Counsel?
Mr. President, before you move forward, I was hoping to get a moment at the beginning of the meeting, but you moved very quickly there. But I'm sure you're aware, you received a phone call, that our ordinance passed in Indianapolis at the Indiana Board, passed unanimously. I was hoping to get to the council before it hit the media, but I know it's already going in the paper today, so I just wanted to bring you that little bit of, just bring you that little bit of information, and thank you for all the work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution 35-2017, designating an area commonly identified as 300 North Fruit Ridge, Terre Haute, Indiana, is the economic revitalization area for the purpose of the 10-year personal property tax abatement, Jadcore LLC. This is for adoption.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Bill Ola, representing the petitioner, Jadcore LLC. This is a request for a personal property abatement only, to install new manufacturing, machinery, and equipment at the Jadcore facility, which is the old A&amp;P building. This is actually the old, original A&amp;P building at 300 North Fruit Ridge. The scoring system that you've utilized would indicate a 10-year abatement period would be in order. We tried to be very thorough and transparent in the application, about numbers of jobs, new payroll. Be glad to answer any questions any council persons might have.
Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 35-2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 36-2017, transfer of $7,250 in the City Council budget.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
There is a shortage in group health insurance, and I spoke with Council President Nasser to use the funds in instruction, legal services, travel, and printing to help cover that shortage. We were able to come up with $7,250 to go towards that shortage, and this is the resolution to approve the transfer.
Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 36-2017? Counsel? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 37-2017, transfer of $5,235 from IT employer group health number 413030 to City Council employer group health number 413030.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
This is the second part of that transfer that Leslie spoke of earlier, that they were able to find funds in another department's group health to help cover the shortage, and this is the remaining balance, $5,235.
Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 37-2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Wesley, could you speak a little bit to what's going on with employer group health? It looks like this, for this budget year, we had a number of departments that had extra, and then we have some departments that don't have enough.
Right.
Can you just talk about that?
That's kind of up. The IT department had extra because he had some employees that he'd planned to hire and did not hire. And I believe...
I can speak for the clerk's office for a moment, just to give you an idea, because we had one, we had two employees who, one left to go back to school, the other one left for another department, and the ones that were hired went on a higher insurance, a higher plan. So, that's where our shortage came in at.
So, it sounds like this isn't necessarily a mistake or a problem in estimating what we needed. It's just the ebb and flow of employees doing what employees do, quitting, being hired, taking different benefit packages.
I'll give you another example. Leslie and I spoke towards the end of 2016 because we were not sure of who our new judge was going to be, the outgoing judge. I don't know if I'm violating anything, but...
Anyway, there was a change in position.
But we didn't know if the incoming judge was going to have a higher insurance policy. So, we budgeted for a higher insurance policy, and that's why there was extra there. It is a gamble sometimes.
If you remember when we were discussing the 2018 budget and the Human Resources Director, Jeff Lorick had left that position.
Yep.
And we had a new one that we hired, and I, I used the maximum amount for someone coming in because, which seemed very high, but because we don't know what it's going to be, you know, until someone's hired. So, it's just kind of the ebb and flow, and you have that many employees, there's going to be, you know, you're not going to be exact.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. I yield.
Anything else? Next order of business, please.
Resolution 38-2017, transfer of $7,450 in the City Court's budget.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
I've been really busy tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Just a lot.
I'm not sure I liked it. This is continuation of, oh, actually, no, let me, let me back up. This is our coverage of a shortage without naming names in employer group health, and we also, our publication of legal notices went through the roof this year. One of the big things was tax abatement. Notices were required by statute. Because of the chart, they tripled in prices, so we had to transfer some funds. We do get reimbursed for those, but it usually takes about 45 to 60 days to get all of that process. So, we found other areas. Was I okay?
Okay. Sorry. Is anyone from the public they'd like to speak on Resolution 38-2017? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Michelle, do we foresee a day when we'll be able to digitally do public notices?
Well, since you brought it up, interestingly enough, the General Assembly in probably the last five years has tweaked the publication requirements each year. And even though I don't have a crystal ball, I do anticipate in three years to five years, sorry, Dave, but there's going to be probably a move from required, requiring them to be in the newspaper to allowing them to be on the website. One of the big changes they made a couple of years ago was to require newspapers to post them on their website for a certain length of time. So, I'm curious to see what happens in the next couple of years to allowing us to post them on our website instead of going through the newspaper.
Well, I'll be sorry to see them go from the newspaper. I actually read them in the newspaper, and I'm sure the newspaper will be sorry to see that revenue stream go, because it looks like it's probably pretty huge.
It is going to be an interesting thing, because not only that, but we also place ads for the rezonings after passage. Before passage, we placed ads for the alley and street vacations. So, those are our larger ads. Tax abatements are the largest ads. Anyone who, in my office who has helped me cut them out of the newspaper will tell you it's not fun because they may be back-to-back, you know, on pages, so you have to make copies. But I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow. But I just, it seems like the last few years, the General Assembly's made a trend to more digital.
I see it coming. Thank you. I yield.
Move to adjourn.
What is that, President? You know I say that. Just a reminder, I will send out official notices on Monday, but in case it, the plans change, but there is a special call next Thursday at 5:30 for launch Terre Haute. But the official notice will go out on Monday.
All right, thanks for the reminder.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A move by Councilman Azar, second by Councilman Devon, that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Hoes, adjourned.